I'd like to reconvene this regular meeting of the Lane County Board of Commissioners for June 5th, 2018. And we are in our afternoon session here, and we start out with Public Works, item 14A, which is the second reading and public hearing on ordinance 1360 in the matter of mending the Rural Comprehensive Plan to Redesignate Land from Forest F-Land to Non-Resources (NRES) land and rezone that land from impacted Forest F2 RCP land to Rural Residential Land Zone RR5 NRES RCP for a 131.55 acre property along with a site review suffix and adopting savings and severability clauses, file number 509PA1505722. And the applicant is Gimble Hill LLC. And I will turn this over to Deanna. I guess I need to start. Before we get to that, let me get to the explanation of the purpose of the hearing and all that, which is, you know, this decision is subject to criteria cited in the Agenda Cover Memo and attachments, and evidence and testimony must be directed towards the approval criteria. Failure to raise an issue and enable a response may preclude appeal to LUBA, Land Use Board of Appeals. The Board of Commissioners is the approval authority for these proceedings. And do we need to go through? Oh, this is, oh, sorry. I'm trying to read the script and move along at the same time. So this is an opportunity for those present to enter information in the record. Only the persons who qualify as a party may appeal the Board's decision to Land Use Board of Appeals. I think at this time, I need to call for, I thought I turned it off. I turned it on when I heard his. At this time, I'd like to call for Board members to declare ex-party contacts and for any conflicts of interest or other biases. Commissioner Sorenson.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to put on the record today that the applicant's attorney is with Hirscher Hunter Law Firm. And in my, in my real estate work, I've had the opportunity to have them represent me some time ago. Just wanted to put that on there. And also, Mr. Sean Malone is an attorney that represents one of the parties that's going to testify. And Ms. Wright, thank you very much for letting me know that Mr. Malone had submitted material into the record. I appreciate the cooperation of Public Works to let me know when Mr. Malone does that because I don't discuss his land use work with him. That involve Lane County, and I certainly have no conflict of interest as it applies to Land Watch Lane County. But I did want to get on the record that I've done some legal work and am continuing to do some private legal work with Mr. Malone. And I guess I'll ask, Mr. Clark, was that sufficient for our discussion?
Yes, I assume in there that you've represented, you don't have any contacts connected with this case and to the extent you.
Oh, yeah. On the ex-party communications, no, I have no ex-party communications.
Thank you. Commissioner Lyken.
None.
Commissioner Farr.
None.
Commissioner Williams.
None.
And I need to note that I believe one of the principal partners in Gimble Hill LLC is Roy Carver.
Yes.
And Mr. Carver and I have known each other for multiple years back when I was doing land use, land development work at Branch Engineering and also in some of his land use actions through the Eugene Water and Electric Board, providing service to those properties. And Mr. Carver has been a contributor to my election campaigns in the past. Like many other folks that are in here doing land use applications that have contributed to me in the past, I feel that I can rule objectively based on the criteria. It does not necessarily mean I'm going to rule in your favor if you have supported my political efforts. And I believe I can look at this objectively based on the criteria and the record and will do so. So I hope that satisfies everybody as far as ex-party contacts and conflicts of interest and other biases. So with that, I just want to note that we have rules of conduct for our board meetings, and we post those online. They're also available if you'd like them. We ask that people remain orderly and not disruptive, and we do ask that folks not cheer or applaud, et cetera, during board meetings. So with that, we'll move on to the staff report, and I'll turn this over to Deanna.
Thank you, Chair and Board of Commissioners. I am Deanna Wright, the staff planner who has processed this application. This is an applicant-initiated plan amendment and concurrent zone change application before you today. The subject property is identified as 180417 Tax Lot 2200 and is located off of Gimble Hill Road, thence via a private easement. The application proposes a redesignation of 131 acres of forest land to non-resourced land and a zone change from impacted forest lands to rural residential lands, RR5. The main focus of this plan amendment criteria is whether the property is better suited for forest uses or residential designation. A non-resourced designation recognizes that some properties are too poor in quality to meet the definition of statewide planning goals for resource lands from either farm or forest lands. Locally in Lane County, at least 13 other requests have been approved since 1984. A major test in a non-resourced designation is a two-pronged soils evaluation for farm use and forest use productivity. The applicant justified the property does not meet the statutory definitions of agricultural land or forest land as supported in their technical data, including soils report, forester report, agronomic report, and Department of Land Conservation Development Review of the applicant soils analysis. To summarize the soils data, the applicant soil professional concluded the property is predominantly composed of Class 5 through 8 soils at approximately 58% and is not resourced land and does not meet the definition of agricultural land under Goal 3. Class 1 through 4 soils are considered high-value soils, meeting the definition of agricultural land. The applicant's consulting forester found that the subject property is capable of producing 43.38 cubic feet of merchantable tree temper volume per acre per year. The state has acknowledged Lane County's definition of a commercial forest use to be 50 cubic feet per acre per year. Therefore, the property does not meet the definition of forest land under Goal 4. Staff believes the soils analysis under attachments 10 through 13 in your packet are acceptable technical data in order to evaluate the farm and forest soils productivity in order to meet the approval criteria. Another major requirement in this plan amendment is compliance with the statewide planning Goal 5, natural resources. Goal 5 requires counties to inventory the locations, quantity, and quality of certain natural resources. Staff determined that the subject property is not identified in natural resource inventories included, including riparian, historic, mineral, and aggregate energy and natural areas. It is included on inventories for big game range habitat, groundwater, and wetlands. As part of the Goal 5 review, if a conflict to the inventoried Goal 5 resources identified, the applicant is required to conduct what's called the Economic, Social, Environmental, and Energy Review, also known as ESEE, analysis. To summarize the big game habitat resource, a conflict was not concluded because the modified development proposal meets Oregon Department of Forestry density recommendations. So no ESEE was completed for that. To summarize the groundwater resource, with the modified development proposal, only one additional well will be necessary. There is an existing well on proposed Lot 12, and Lot 10 is served by the subdivision's existing community water system. According to the Lane County Water Resources Working Paper, the allowed use conflicts, if it's within a groundwater quantity limited area, which the subject property is located within, and you could see attachment 15 for that. Therefore, the applicant completed the ESEE analysis and resolved the Goal 5 conflict with groundwater by demonstrating compliance with applicable standards that have been adopted into Lane Code, and that's Chapter 13.050 subsection 13. It states an aquifer test is required for required lots greater than 20 acres in size, and an aquifer test was provided as part of attachment 16. Additionally, the Water Resources Working Paper states that residential development should be allowed in groundwater quantity limited areas if a showing is made that water will be available for the foreseeable future. The applicant's engineer concluded that aquifer would yield inadequate residential supply and reaffirmed their findings in a letter dated April 3rd, 2017. Thus, based on evidence and the modified proposal, a conflict was found not to exist, and the proposal is consistent with Goal 5. To summarize their wetlands resource, a conflict was concluded not to be found. The Planning Commission held deliberations in July 2017 and recommended a denial in a 5 to 3 vote. In response to this, to the Lane County Planning Commission majority recommendation and a significant amount of testimony received by neighbors and others addressing the groundwater issue, the applicant decided to reduce the number of residential lots that could be created if this plan amendment is approved. Instead of the originally proposed 14 lots, the applicant is now proposing two additional residential lots, each at 40 acres in size. The division is not processed within this plan amendment. It would be a subsequent application should this plan amendment obtain approval. The remaining acres would be divided into four non-buildable open space lots and one vineyard lot, which would prohibit residence per the applicant's draft covenant, which is attachment 14 in your packet. In conclusion, staff has reviewed the applicant's materials and concurs that the applicant has met the approval criteria. Staff did receive additional testimony, some of which was forwarded to you today, but I have not had time to review all the materials yet. Should there be an abundant amount of testimony today, staff respectfully recommends that you consider closing the public hearing but keeping the record open for date time certain for additional testimony to be submitted into the record. I'm able to answer any questions now or during the hearing should they arise. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff at this time? So if there are no questions, then we will move on to the actual public hearing where we will first hear the applicant's testimony and then testimony of persons in favor and then testimony of other persons. If you wish to testify, I believe we have a sign up back there that you can sign up to testify. You did not have to sign in if you're just here appearing, so just only if you wish to speak, that'll allow me to be able to call you up. The first, after we get signed up here, I'll have her bring this sheet up, and then we'll get the applicant up. Do we have somebody here representing the applicant? So if I can get you to come up and how much time do you think you need to present your case for?
Commissioner, I'd just like a few minutes.
Just a few minutes? Okay. Thank you. And if you'll state your name and your firm's location or whatever for the record, and then you can start your testimony.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Michael Gilardi. I'm a lawyer with the firm Hirscher Hunter.
Hang on a second. I don't think I officially said this for the record. I'm opening the public hearing. Thank you.
Again, good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Michael Gilardi. I'm a lawyer with the firm Hirscher Hunter here in town. For the record, our address is 180 East 11th Street, Eugene 97401. I represent the applicant Gimble Hill Properties LLC, which is owned by Roy Carver. What I'd like to do initially is just give you a little bit of context as to the history of this property and the other processes that the former owners and the applicant have been through, and just reiterate, I think, what you heard from the staff about how the current application is different than the application that, you know, was initially filed in 2015 and went before the Planning Commission a year ago. So as I think you know, this property is southwest of town. It's on Gimble Hill Road, which is off of Bailey Hill. Historically, it was owned by the Hafner family, and it was about 175 acres, and they had one house on the property. They filed a Measure 37 claim in roughly 2007. That initial, the property was initially analyzed for 33 residential lots, particularly in the context of water availability. The Hafners then applied to the county for a 30-lot subdivision under Measure 37. While that application was being processed, we had Measure 49, which was in 2007, and under the Measure 49 rules, the property qualified for nine 5-acre residential lots in addition to the rest of the acreage, which had the existing home, which is referred to as the remnant or the residual lot. And so that was the subdivision that was approved under Measure 49. That subdivision, the approvals for that have been complete. That's now known as the Vineyards at Gimble Hill or Phase 1 of the Vineyards at Gimble Hill. Then in 2015, the applicant came to the county for essentially Phase 2 of that development. And it's important to distinguish that, you know, the original proposal was Measure 37, Measure 49, which, you know, under that scheme was intended to be compensation for lost property value associated with modern zoning. The 2015 and the current applications are, you know, not under Measure 37 or 49. They are applications under the modern zoning and are in accordance with modern zoning regulations. So the 2015 application was for 14 additional residential lots that would be, you know, made up of the, you know, of the rest of the acreage outside of the nine residential lots. You know, there were a number of concerns raised about that proposal. Some of those were technical legal concerns related to land use regulations. Some of them were more practical concern, things such as groundwater availability, wildlife habitat, wetlands development. The applicant and his former counsel and their technical team, you know, they developed a, you know, a robust analysis around all of those issues and certainly felt that they had met all the applicable criteria for that 14-lot subdivision. Nevertheless, the Planning Commission did recommend denial of that proposal or of the zone change that would lead to that proposal. And so, you know, the applicant decided to take a step back to, you know, really think about the concerns that have been raised and reevaluate the proposal. And, you know, Mr. Carver asked me to kind of come on board and kind of help provide a fresh perspective on this and to, you know, make sure that we could kind of reevaluate this and move forward in just as responsible and professional way as possible. So the proposal that we're putting forward now is, you know, it's the same basic rezoning that was done before, again, from forest zone to a non-resourced designation and a rural residential zoning, but instead of the 14 lots, it's just two additional lots beyond the, you know, the residual lot that, you know, had the traditional dwelling on it. So it's very much reduced. The two 40-acre residential parcels are, you know, consistent with the guidelines for wildlife, for big game habitat under Goal 5. It was mentioned, there's only one additional well that's going to be placed on this property, which I think likely is, you know, at least as many new wells as would be available on this property under the current zoning. So it's little to no net impact beyond what would be allowed by the current zoning scheme. So, you know, we believe that that change in the proposal really addresses the concerns that, you know, folks have raised, but certainly we want to listen to what folks have to say here today, and we want to answer any questions that you have. So I'll stop for now, but I guess I request permission to be able to have a rebuttal once we hear from everyone else here.
That's pretty standard.
Thank you.
To come back to the applicant for rebuttal. Thank you. So with that, that's the only person I have signed up to speak in favor of the proposal so that there won't be any other testimony persons in favor. So we'll turn to testimony of other persons. And the first person signed up is Sean Malone.
Good afternoon to the board. Sean Malone, on behalf of the Gimble Hill Neighborhood Group. I submitted some testimony. Well, my address is 259 East 5th Avenue, 200C Eugene 97402, or excuse me, 97401. I submitted some testimony earlier this morning of my own and then also on behalf of Scott Hilgenberg of the Crag Law Center. So I can hand that out. So obviously, I think the substance and the vast majority of the argument is contained in the written argument there. I'm not going to go over it all today, but I'd like to hit some high points and talk about some issues that have arisen. Mr. Hilgenberg, on behalf of Crag Law Center there and the Gimble Hill Neighborhood Group, largely addressed the agricultural issue, that is, whether the property is appropriate for non-resourced designation essentially. I focused on the issues of big game range under Goal 5. The subject property is peripheral big game range. ODFNW has set forward a 40-acre minimum for residential dwellings on peripheral big game range habitat. And then I also addressed the water issues, and again, that's related to Goal 5. As Mr. Gilardi mentioned, the prior property owner received a windfall from the subdivision under Measure 37, Measure 49. And then adding on top of that is the proposal we have here. The prior subdivision was 10 lots, nine residential lots in the remainder. Lot 10 is now essentially a donut around the existing subdivision that is Phase 1. So I think one of the things that the Board's going to have to wrestle with here is whether to take account for that residential development in the existing subdivision when looking at the residential densities as it relates to peripheral big game range. Again, I said that ODFNW, who submitted a record and it's attached to my comments there, submitted a letter into the record saying that, you know, we have a 40, and this is part of the comprehensive plan of the county here, that there's a 40-acre minimum residential dwelling in this peripheral big game habitat. And so we already have nine residences, and we're proposing, at least on the face, two 40-acre residential lots plus a seven-acre residential lot. So essentially, adding those all together, we have about 12 residential lots. However, the two 40-acre residential lots retain a base zoning of RR5. That is, those 40-acre lots can be subdivided into each one eight, five-acre lots. So the 40, the two 40-acre residential lots can essentially be turned into 16 additional residential lots. And that would bring our grand total of residential lots on this entire property, that is, the existing subdivision that's in the middle and the sort of donut around it, that is the basis for this subject application. That brings you to about 26 residential lots in this water quantity, water quality limited area that also happens to be habitat for big game. So that brings us down to about a residential, an average residential density of about 6.9 acres. And again, ODFNW says you can only have 40 per residential dwelling. So we're in a situation here in which we are parcelizing or setting the stage for extremely parcelizing this area that has significant Goal 5 resources, that is, the big game, and that is the water quantity and water quality limited areas. And what happens when you increase the residential density beyond, or increase the density beyond 40 acres is that you have to do what's called an ESE analysis. The Board's probably aware of this from everything from the more recent Ivers The board's probably aware of this from everything from the more recent Iverson application and several others. In the Iverson application, the applicant and the opponents were able to reach an agreement that ensured that 40-acre residential density standard remained. And again, here, we're going much far beyond that with about 6.9 residential dwellings, or dense, excuse me, a average residential density of 6.9 acres. So you can see we're far off from the ODFNW's recommendation. And what do we get here? We should get an EC analysis. That is, an analysis of the environmental, social, energy, and economic consequences of going beyond that 40-acre minimum. Here, however, the applicant is proposing not to prepare one of those EC analyses. So I think we have, at the outset, a very clear legal error going with the applicant. We're going far beyond what ODFNW, and ODFNW has taken this position in this case, what their standard allows for. And so I think what, one thing the board can do here is look at the residential density in several different respects. You can look at it as 26 residential dwellings on the property, if you count the existing subdivision. If you take that away, you'll have 17. That is, the two 40-acre residential lots, each divided, divisible into eight five-acre properties, because again, we're retaining that resident, that rural residential five-acre density-based zoning. Now, you have to ask yourselves, why would the applicant want to retain that zoning? Well, it's obvious for subsequent subdivision. And so the board needs to take that into account here. And let's say if you don't even do that, you are left with two 40-acre residential lots, those wouldn't meet the ODFNW standard, but then you have one additional seven-acre residential lot. Clearly, that seven-acre residential lot would also implicate an EC analysis because it's far less than 40 acres. So no matter which way you do this, you're going to have to have an EC analysis. And for whatever reason, the applicant is refusing to do that in this case. So clear legal error. And the next issue that I'll just broadly touch upon is the water quantity and quality issues. We're essentially here having dueling experts. There's the EGNR report from the applicant's consultant, and then there's the report from Mark Yinger, the neighbor's consultant. The neighbor's consultant pokes quite a few holes in the EGNR report. But here's probably the biggest problem with the EGNR report. It's more than 10 years old. It's stale data. Now, I don't know who is going to rely on a decade-old report to analyze groundwater availability, but on the face of it, that seems like a pretty tenuous limb to go out on. The Mark Yinger report, beyond pointing out that it's more than, pointing out that the EGNR report is more than 10 years old, notes that the surrounding neighborhoods have low yields in the area wells, and that the aquifer has low storage capacity. Now, one thing the applicant's consultant could have done is investigate neighboring wells. Well, they didn't do that. Well, these neighbors did go ahead and put forward that information, and it indicates that there's sort of steady drawdown in this area. Again, we're talking about a water quantity, as well as quality, limited area, and we're talking about putting on top of the nine existing residential dwellings, home sites, potentially 26. So extremely problematic. There are multiple wells that have been dug in the area, wells have been deepened, and all this points to a declining aquifer. As Mr. Yinger has pointed out, Mr., one of Mr. Yinger's letters is included in my submission, as well as the well data prepared by the neighbors. One of the issues you want to look at when preparing an EC analysis for water quality limited areas is how is it going to affect the neighbors? And that's one of the, again, one of the large shortcomings of the EGNR report. So those are essentially 30,000-foot views of these two significant Goal Five resources, water quantity and quality, big game range habitat. The thing I'll leave you with is that the draft findings that are in front of you were prepared by the applicant. By no means is the board required or obligated to adopt those. I'm more than happy to work with county council, or staff, or whoever, to prepare findings in support of a denial, and I believe those findings would be upheld on appeal. And unless there are any questions from the board, which I welcome, I'd be happy to hand it off to some of the neighbors who can articulate the sort of very real-world problems that this proposal poses for them.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
So in the interest of time, I'd like people to try and limit their comments to three minutes if they can. It was very liberal with the attorneys as they're arguing some specific details and all that, but if folks can kind of, and try and not, you know, if somebody's made a point, we don't need to hear the same point over and over again. We take note of how it affects the criteria. So we'll start off with John, looks like Winquist, and then followed by Bob Katosh.
Katosh.
Katosh, got it the first time.
Hi, my name is John Winquist. I live at 29461 Gimble Hill. I've just three points I'd like to cover as briefly as possible. The first one is the timber averaging, and I'm just using the applicant's data. They report that half the acreage, more than half of the acreage, produces one and a half times the minimum timber production required to be a resource property. In order to get that average down, they considered everything that wasn't above the standard as being zero. And I think we all know the trees don't just stop right there. They, quality tapers off. There has been timber harvests, best of my knowledge, from some of the marginal lands as well. I think if they were given their appropriate values, which would have been less than the full value, but when averaged, would have brought the overall value up as a resource A second is the soils, and I guess I would encourage you to read a submission that, from someone who's not here today, Rich Freund. I think he covers soils much better than I could. My point about soils would be that the variance in the soil reports is more than 50%. And the LCD, in a memo which I, email which I cited, says that the county, when there's, if there's any concern, can authorize an independent. I think, believe 31 neighbors submitted a petition to the planners for an independent review, and we didn't, that hasn't been done. With that big a discrepancy, I guess I would hope it would be done. The last point I'd like to make is just that the, how does the five-acre request make sense? Mr. Gallardi, I believe, said that it could be done with the current zoning. Additional well would be authorized. Not sure if that's actually accurate, but five acres, I would argue, makes no sense at all, unless you're looking at future subdivision. I asked the county, what, the planning staff, what was the future subdivision potential? And I didn't really get a definitive answer. So I led a little research myself, as nearly as I can tell, just reading through the county materials on the web. Subdivisions, once the zoning is in place, the process becomes much easier for a subdivision. There aren't, or isn't nearly the public input that we're having right now. So that would be my concern, is I think the five-acre zoning just opens the whole thing up to future development, and without the kind of oversight that we're having right now. I personally could live with the 40 acres. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have Bob Katosh, followed by John Levy, or Levy?
My name is Bob Katosh. I live at 86835 McMorret Lane. I helped organize the Gimble Hill Neighborhood Group in February of 2017. We were concerned that the proposed expansion of the vineyards at the Gimble Hill Housing Development would result in a reduction of groundwater available for our wells, the loss of viable farmland and wetlands, and provide less protection for big game in the Gimble Hill area. We live, my wife and I live half, half a mile from the vineyards at Gimble Hill Development, and we are concerned about the effects on our water supply if new houses and new wells were built on the property. And the Gimble Hill area, as you've heard, is classified as limited, having limited groundwater quantity and quality. And our well becomes stressed in the summertime to the point where we're concerned whether our well will go dry, and this happens frequently, and our summers are getting much drier. So it was clear to us that these new wells, if constructed, would begin to deplete the aquifers that we all depend on for our water supply. Mark Winger, that Sean mentioned, hydrologist from Ben, reviewed the applicant's data and analyzed recent data about the problems many of our neighbors are having with their wells. He submitted his final report to the Planning Commission on April 6, 2017. His final statement was as follows. "It is clear that groundwater levels in the Gimble Hill area have declined and will most likely continue to decline. Additional development will contribute to the decline of groundwater levels to the detriment of existing well owners," and I might add, "to future well owners." So after the members of our neighborhood group provided a significant amount of oral and written testimony to the Lane County Planning Commission, the Planning Commission on July 18, 2017, made the recommendation to deny the application because of concerns about the depletion of the Goal Five resources of groundwater in the Gimble area, in the Gimble Hill area. And in response to this decision, Michael Farthing, attorney to Roy Carver, submitted an amended application, and that's why we're here now. The amended application proposes a division of the remaining property into two 40-acre lots, but which could be rezoned into rural residential five-acre lots. Regardless of the parcel size, the zone size allows for further division of those 80 acres because up to 16 lots can ultimately be created. The Board of Commissioners must consider the number of lots that can be created, rather than only the number of lots proposed at this time. A staff report was issued limiting any future development on the two 40-acre lots, but did not provide a rationale for that limitation, nor did it impose adequate restrictions on the future subdivision of that property. We believe that the proposed rezoning is not protective of our groundwater, which is a Goal Five resource, so we strongly urge the board to deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you. John Levy, followed by Bill Barnet, sorry.
My name is Jonathan Levy. I live at 29437 Gimble Hill Road. I am about a, less than a quarter mile from these properties. I will just give personal testimony about my water system. I've been out there since 93, and prior to moving in, there was a well done and well logs, and then approximately 10 years later, our water level dropped about 20 feet, just as a personal history. Second issue was the use of the land, and they're talking about trees, but it's very good land for other things besides trees. In fact, it's adjacent to a vineyard. In fact, the Carver has marketed the property, saying you can have your own vineyard on your property. This is excellent soil for vineyards, and Lane County is known for that, and it's potentially very profitable and very water-unusing. I mean, you have to get the, three years, get the grapes in there, and then they don't need much water. So it's a good crop for everybody. The final point is that we live in an aquifer, and it's a glass of water. How many straws are you going to put into that glass of water before you suck it dry? We all acknowledge that water levels are dropping. That's clear. Less rain, drier climate. And by giving this, Carver, his opportunity to make money, what you're doing is affecting all these other people and their homes and their values. If we have no water, what are our places worth? So you're going to make a choice between a potential developer who clearly had Phase One, that means there's going to be Phase Two, and Phase Three. They're going to want their property. That's clear what their plan is. This 40 acres is not the end, and I think this group would accept the 40 acres if they agreed to stop it at that. But they're not. That's clear. So again, you have to balance the developer's need with these people and my home, and how much water we're going to have, and we have to have water brought in right now to maint ourselves during the dry months of the year, and this year will be pretty bad, and we just know what the future's going to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Barnett, followed by Stephen Stanley, it looks like?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hello, Commissioners, thank you. My name is Bill Barnett. I live at 86821 McMorret Lane, which is under three-quarters a mile from the subject property. And I don't want to repeat too much of what John just said, but anyways, I've been living here for exactly 33 years. June 5, 1985 was when I moved here to the same location that I live now, and in spite of the grass seed pollen, I love living here. All of us who live around the top of Gimble Hill know about the water. It's really stressed, it's really fragile. I've submitted well logs already in my written testimony to Deanna that, about my own property and about wells, historic well logs from the Hafner property, showing, you know, static level lowerings, outright well failing, low flow, and then all of us also deal with, most of us, deal with the arsenic levels in the water, which is another problem. There's arsenic, we get, it's common to have arsenic numbers that are up to or exceeding permissible levels, which requires filtering and all kinds of expensive and precarious treatments. So to have, as has been said before me, this Trojan horse of an idea come in, where they're going to just do a 40-acre division twice, and then that's it, but that's not it. It's opening up the doors for a future 16 more wells in an area that's already very stressed. So I had more to say, but it's just repeating other people's. So the one quick thing that I want to say, address is the Goal Three about the soil and agriculture. And it's just historically that for decades, there has been harvestable forest lands on that subject property and the contiguous properties, as well as the commercial vineyard previously mentioned, right next door. That's Noble Estates is next door. And as John pointed out, they marketed this place as the vineyards, and now they're saying that the soil isn't good enough for vineyards. So I don't get that. I just wanted to add a little of that sort of plain common sense to all the scientific data that you will be hearing. And lastly, I just want to say, just as John said, that this is, you know, they don't, the people developing here don't maybe have a legal obligation to the neighborhood, other than their property. But, and they, you know, why should they? They're, they don't live here, they're going to leave as soon as this hit-and-run thing that they're doing is done. But we're going to be here, and our property values are going to be compromised if the water is affected by 16 more wells. And, you know, I agree with what everybody else has said, that if it was truly just one 40-acre thing, and that was it, and it was going to be set that way until proven that there's water for all, then I'd feel differently, but I'm worried about this Trojan horse aspect of it. Thank you very much. Please vote against this.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I only have one copy of this, but I did submit it electronically, so it should be in the record once that is sorted out. My name is Stephen Stanley. My wife, Leslie Wolf, and I live at 29122 Gimble Hill Road, which is directly adjacent to the subject property. Our property is to the west of the vineyards of Gimble Hill. Since March 2017, we have collected a photographic record of the wildlife activity on the eastern boundary of our property, which, like I said, borders the western boundary of Gimble Hill, vineyards of Gimble Hill. There's a map included in my testimony that shows where those cameras are located. Dear, you know, of the thousands of images that I recorded, the following pages represent just a healthy and varied activity of the wildlife. just a healthy and varied activity of the wildlife. Deer and turkeys make up the most predominant game animals. With multiple daily recordings, coyote, bobcat, and fox predators are common. Bears are present, not only as recorded, but require everyone in rural areas to secure compost piles, garbage cans, and bird feeders to discourage contact. That's just the way of life in the country. As I was preparing this yesterday in my dining room, a one-year-old bear climbed a tree next to my window, and I was able to get a photograph of him snooping around my deck. We have bears in the area. We also know that as long as they don't cause problems, we live with them, because we don't want them killed. They won't be relocated. So as long as they don't cause a problem, we deal with it. They roam around. Cougars have been sighted, but I haven't captured one on a trail cam yet. But they're, they're being reported all the time. And of course, raccoons, possums, skunks are common, even in urban settings, but this shows that the habitat is healthy. Birds don't usually pose for trail cameras, but I've gotten photographs of great horned owls and screech owls and piloted woodpeckers. And resident and migratory birds are common and prolific. And the other pages of this document, I'm showing the wildlife that I recorded over the last year. There's a page of bears, there's a page of bobcats, there's a page of coyotes, there's three pages of deer, and there's a representation of fox, turkeys, and other wildlife. The point of this document is to show that the subject property is a vibrant, healthy wildlife habitat. I can only guess at the robust daily and nightly wildlife activity at the wetlands pond that is located on the Vineyards' property, since the developer is reluctant to document wildlife habitat in the property's interior. If it is anything like what I recorded on the boundary of our properties, and the pond being surrounded by forested land, it well deserves its ODFW peripheral Big Game Habitat designation. There was a letter submitted that our attorney referred to on April 3, 2017, from Brian Wilfer, who was the district wildlife biologist, that recommends the 40-acre limit. The rezoning of this Measure 49 remnant lot, from its protected F2 designation to an RR5 zone, is blatantly transparent attempt to secure a zoning that will allow the 40-acre lots to be repartitioned into a subdivision the developer has always planned. That's our major concern, and like what other people have said, if it was two 40-acre lots that were restricted to 40 acres, we probably wouldn't have an issue with it. And as far as the 10th existing home site that was designated in the Measure 49 final order, it was designated as a home site that was supposed to be a 10-acre lot. So the remnant lot was everything else, and it was, under the final order, the remnant lot was to protect forest land. And this is an attempt to circumvent that protection. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea Turner, followed by Lori Siegel.
I'm Andrea Turner. I live at 29141 Gimble Hill Road. Our property is 500 feet, so our eastern boundary of our property is 500 feet from the westernmost boundary of the subject property, right across the road from, on Gimble Hill. Our property is 95 acres, 66 of which are designated farmland, and 23 are designated forest, and we are subject to all the F2 regulations that thereby we are subject to. So it is part of our mission to protect the forest land, which currently turns out is slowly dying, if we look at our forest land, little by little, with this drought over the years. We've only been at our property two years, come July 1 of this summer. And in the two years that we've been there, I have seen the firs starting to die at ridiculous rate. So the drought is hitting harder and harder, even within those two years. Let me give you a little background. So I have a PhD in applied engineering physics from Cornell, and I'm not a hydrologist by training, but I did help put together the well data. I submitted that last time, and I'll submit it again. It's for all the wells that surround the neighborhood, including the Hafner property, which has had more than 10 wells drilled over its existence. And so the information is also on a map, which I think I asked Deanna if she would bring and resubmit. You may not have brought it. That's, that's okay. Hopefully, you can provide it to them. I have a copy of a map, which is not, doesn't have the well data on it, but in this copy of this map that you'll see, you can see the outline illustrating all the wells that have been drilled, with multiple wells on the properties, and deepened, so on and so forth. I also wanted to reference the big game data that we put together. I also aggregated the big game data and presented that before the Planning Commission. I have a copy of that submission here, as well as some updates to some of the physical observations. So it turns out Steve Stanley, he did make many, many, many photos, and I went through his desk, thousands of photos, and he missed the fact that he did capture a cougar on there. So I have a cougar and an image of a cougar, which is on the subject property. So I submit that, and, and I've also, you know, got a written letter, which I'm not going to read from now, because it's quite, quite long. But I just want to give you a little bit of background of myself. So even though I have a background in applied engineering physics, I've been making a career change to becoming a farmer. And the reason for moving to this 95-acre property in Eugene is because of the beauty and the amazingness and the potential for this particular piece of property. Our elevation of our property goes from about 680 feet above sea level down to about 440 feet above sea level. We serve as a drainage point for the watershed of our area. So all the water that comes down through the creek and also through the mountain physically makes its way onto our property and creates a seasonal water area, which supports a tremendous amount of wildlife. Though I have not physically documented and witnessed bears on the property, I go around taking pictures of skat and so on and so forth, and I see the bones from previous animals that have been devoured by other creatures, cougars and probably coyotes. So they are abundant, and is illustrated by not only the testimonies from the neighbors, but also the physical imagery. Something I want to just point out, it's a little bit of a personal thing, you know, being a farmer has been a dream for me, and having a farm that I want to grow and cultivate and become certified organic as time goes is something that I'm on a mission to do. I'm currently on a working group with the Travel Oregon, Travel Lane County, and the Willamette Valley Visitors Association to create a farm-ag trail for the South Willamette Valley, because the state of Oregon recognizes the value of farmland and how much there is going on in the South Willamette Valley. So keeping that in mind, I hope my farm will eventually be on this farm trail. And it's just illustrative of the fact that the area around us is so productive. The fact that 42%, according to the soil survey that was done by the applicant, 42% of the soil on that property is in class levels 1 through 4, that's a significant fraction. That's not something you should dismiss, okay? It's not more than 50% according to their survey. It's more than 50% according to the national survey that was done years ago. So you can't just take that fraction and dismiss it as junk land. Also want to point out that historically, you know, there was mention the applicant had that historically, you know, no farming has taken place nearby on adjacent properties. So there has already been mentioned that there's a vineyard nearby. Well, the property that we're on, I'm in this process of trying to evaluate it, but has been hayed for decades and decades and decades, so it's been a hay-producing farm. The previous owner prior to us had hundreds of sheep and cattle and goats. So I think, again, to say, and we're 500 feet from that border, you cannot sit there and say that the farmland doesn't exist and that there isn't agriculture going on. I'm not going to go too much into the discussion anymore about big game and water. All that data is there, and you've heard the testimony of many neighbors. But I will say that the applicant's also missing an opportunity. You know, the World Economic Forum put out an article not too long ago on turning urban lands and having what we call agri-hoods. So there currently exists about 150 agri-hoods in the United States. What an agri-hood is, is a neighborhood that's built up around a farm. And so it turns out, you know, millennials these days are not wanting to have neighborhoods with golf courses. Instead, they want neighborhoods that bring them closer to nature, closer to their food. And so I feel like the applicant's missing the point of being able to, especially within Eugene, take advantage of this whole movement that's happening to appreciate and value farmland and forest land, and instead to promote that and not try and devastate it. So if the applicant can keep it so that everything stays designated F2, designated as impacted forest land, and not go to RR5, I don't have a problem with that. But as it is, trying to take that and make it an RR5 with future development and devastate what's beautiful and amazing about that land would be a tragedy. So I ask you to deny that.
Thank you. Lori Siegel, followed by Stephen Turner.
I'm Lori Siegel from Landwatch Lane County, Post Office Box 5347, in Eugene, at 97405. I want to talk a little bit about the working papers, the Water Resources Working Paper, which is essentially Lane County's ECU analysis, which led them to the establishment of the water quality and quantity limited areas. One of the things that the Water Working Paper talks a lot about is cumulative effects. And that hasn't been discussed much at all in conjunction with this proposal. The neighbors are getting at the issue of cumulative effects, but the actual issue itself hasn't been addressed by the applicant. The Working Papers understood that there were certain areas of the county that were water quantity limited, and this was in 1982. It said in 1982, "The western portion of the county, generally west of the main stem and coast for Willamette, excluding the Florence Dunes, poor-yielding rock aquifer not subject to easy degradation. Rarely do wells yield greater than 100 gallons per minute. Some wells tend to 100 gallons per minute, many wells less than 10 gallons per minute. Dry holes not uncommon." This was in 1982, so many decades have passed. Since that time, and during that time, there have been many land divisions in this township range and section. In the late '60s, there was West Hills. It created four lots in the first addition, originally, and in the first addition and additional lot. Then in 1977, Tax Lot 200, in the same township range and section as the subject property. Tax Lot 200 is south and west of the subject property, not by very much. So in 1977, it was zoned AGT5, and it was divided into two parcels by partition, 150 acres and 10 acres. And then, in 1995, it was divided again by partition. At the time, this property was E40, and the 150-acre parcel was divided into three parcels, 54 acres, almost 55, 43 acres, and 42 acres. Then in 2001, parcel one of that partition, the 54-acre parcel, was replanted as a subdivision, Wild Turkey Subdivision, with four lots. What enabled that subdivision was rezoning to marginal lands. So those lots, 20 acres, 14 acres, 10 acres, and 10 acres. Then in 2009, lots three and four of that Wild Turkey Subdivision, 20 acres and 10 acres, was re-divided by partition, replanted, and to create three parcels. And then, in 2011, Lot 1 of the 2001 Wild Turkey Subdivision was partitioned, creating three parcels. Those were the marginal lands zoning. So what has happened was that the land has been re-divided four times since 1975, this one tax lot in close proximity to the subject property, with the result being nine additional lots, all needing and using groundwater. So this is the issue of cumulative effects. This is why the neighbors are experiencing a lot of the problems that they're experiencing because of this parcelization and this rezoning. When the county understood which areas of the county were most limited back in 1982, and had discussions and policy statements in the Water Resources Working Paper to address this issue, that they recognized was not going to get better over time. So one of the things that was considered back in the day in the Water Resources Working Paper, in the policy discussion, was that well-water availability would be required, there would be a need for review in conjunction with every building permit, not just in conjunction with subdivisions that made lots of less than 20 acres, which is the case now, and which is one of the reasons the applicant asserts that, well, we're only going to have two lots larger than 20 acres, so everything should be fine. What hasn't been addressed are the cumulative effects. I put more about the Working Papers in my written statements, I won't bore you anymore today. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Stephen Turner, and that's everyone I have signed up for today.
Hi, I'm Stephen Turner, also from 29141 Gimble Hill Road, as you heard from my wife earlier. Just a couple of things I wanted to offer. So I visited the land when it was offered for sale briefly in 2017, and while I was there, I had the opportunity to see the pond. It was in the dry season, and the pond still had water, and there were numerous waterfowl, actually quite strikingly beautiful, that area. I just want to say, because nobody else has said it, to me, it's obvious that this is not non-resourced land. I don't know if that's clear. It's obviously a resource. This is an asset. And if you go stand on it, it's clear. And I visited it with the intention of looking at it to purchase it when he offered it for sale. Another thing that didn't get mentioned, but is worth pointing out, is that on the subject property, there've been numerous dry wells drilled, lots of false attempts to extraordinary deaths. So wells that, even though they're up on the hill, go down below the level of the property that we're living at. I'm also concerned about the process. Why are we here? We have a recommendation to deny, and then there's an amendment, but the amendment is pretty extreme. Why are we going without a review of this by the Planning Commission? So just from a process point of view, that seems strange. The concept of redesignating land, why designation, the way I understand it, is supposed to follow climate and geology? And if we move forward with this, we're going to have the map of designation of Oregon have a little carve-out that's exactly the shape of this subject property with all kinds of, what the state is going to say, "This is resource land," except for that little bit there that just happens to be exactly shaped like the subject property. That, that's not worth anything. But all the rest of it is fine. So then, and that sort of leads into this question of density. So we have 95 acres, and there seems to be some kind of value attached to land in its future ability to develop and subdivide. Well, the application that I saw earlier had in it a formula that said that the density requirements would be met by relying on open space that's on our property, in addition to all of our neighbors around. So that feels to me like, under that rationale, this is an appropriation of some sort of homestead right that we have. Well, that seems wrong to me. And the current proposal, as I understand it, it creates two 40-acre lots, but it makes one that's well under 40 acres. So maybe this new amended proposal is taking a lot less from us, but it still feels like this action would be appropriating some of our ability in the future to subdivide. And as much as that has cash value, that feels like it's being taken away from us, and I don't like that at all. So thank you.
Thank you. So that was the last. So that was the last person I had signed up to testify today. Is there anyone that wishes to testify that did not get a chance to sign up? So from there, I will, we will go to, are there any additional comments from staff at this time?
Yes, just one.
Mr. Chair, doesn't the applicant get to rebut?
After staff.
Oh, okay.
So we heard some concern, some amount of concern with the rural residential zoning designation. Even though they are requesting the RR5 zone, staff recommended the site review suffix for the plan amendment, and it was addressed in the staff report. And what that does, it alerts staff and others that additional conditions are present, and that it's specifically regarding the future development of the property, which would be limited to two new residential lots as proposed by the applicant. So when the applicant gives us a plan amendment, they also typically submit the tentative plan so that we have something to measure the development with the approval criteria. And in this case, that's what, the tentative plan is what we use to measure its impacts with big game, groundwater, et cetera, like for the GO5 natural resources. So what that means is if one of these 40-acre properties came in to divide into subsequent subdivision, we would probably have to tell them, they would have to submit another plan amendment to gain consistency with the other approval criteria that's found in the big game and the other GO5 natural resources and the other plan amendment criteria for that matter. So that's what, the site review suffix is not opposed by the applicant either. So it's something that was going to be, it's in the title for the ordinance. So does that clarify some potential confusion?
Sure, but I, before, I just want to check something, and maybe legal counsel might want to answer this question. So if we have questions about testimony and we want clarification from staff, should we ask that during the public hearing or after we close the public hearing, but the record's open? I just want to make sure we're doing that in the right place in the process.
Testimony from whom?
Well, from the neighbors and the applicant. If we have questions of staff about that particular testimony, should we ask it during the open public hearing, or should we wait till after the open public hearing?
I think it makes sense to do it all in public hearing, to the extent that you're going to want to hear from someone other than staff. Even to respond to what staff has told you, that makes sense to do it in the hearing.
So then I will, I will open it up to Commissioners to ask questions of staff.
Great question. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And still, there's the opportunity for the applicant to rebut after we've asked these questions. So Commissioner Farr.
Thank you. Ms. Wright, I'm reading the testimony that I know that I took, and a lot of the issues presented to us surrounded the future subdivision of the 40-acre lots. And you've stated that it would need to go through an additional, an additional application Now, my question is, is that into perpetuity? I think the problems that seem to be arising were not this year or next year or 10 years from now, but maybe sometime distant down the road, that could be a future even, you know, five-acre subdivision.
Could you please speak up a little louder? We can't hear you.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, thank you. Sorry about that. I asked for the, if I may, just take a second to reiterate that I asked for the perpetuity. Is the future subdivision, does that go into, years into the future, which seems to be more of the issue for the people presenting testimony today, rather than next year or the year after, or the year after that?
So the applicant in this circumstance has submitted Attachment 5, which is their tentative partition plan, should this plan amendment gain approval. It's a three-lots partition, and that's what their intent would be. If in the future, this plan amendment gets approved and one of the purchasers of one of those other lots, the 40-acre lots, wanted to come in and divide that in the future, I believe they would have to come back to us and get another plan amendment to show consistency with the GO5 natural resources such as big game and groundwater and wetlands.
Even if that were 20 years or 30 years from now?
Yes, that does run with the land. That site review overlay would remain. And I think the intent of the site review is to limit, so that as the applicant submitted a request to have the, just the two 40-acre lots, if there was a request by a future property owner to divide it, to subdivide it, as this has been raised here, that wouldn't be consistent with the zoning and the overlay if the board approves it the way the staff has recommended it. So yes, it would require coming back in for another plan amendment to address that.
You gave me a very clear answer to a relatively unclear question, but that seems to satisfy that particular issue to me. I'll listen to more testimony. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Sorensen.
Yeah, I wanted to ask Mr. Clark the question that the last person that testified asked, and that was, the applicant made a request for, I'll say, 1, 2, 3, and now the Planning Commission held hearings on that, staff examined that, public, had an opportunity for public comment or testimony on that. Planning Commission voted to deny it, recommend denying it. And then applicant changed their proposal. And the question is, does this then have to go back to the Planning Commission? And if not, can the board then base its decision on the testimony and written materials that have been submitted for this hearing?
I'll let the staff weigh in as I see appropriate. I don't think it's a problem from my perspective. The Planning Commission's role is to make recommendations to the board. The board still has final decision-making authority in this. And I think historically, we have done in the county similar process where the application that went to the Planning Commission changes along the way. In theory, the board could ask the Planning Commission to look at the sort of renewed or amended application. The problem with that is you've got this statutory timeline ticking in the background of 150 days, I think, and typically...
So you can't send it back as a practical matter?
I don't think there's time to do that. There seldom is in these sorts of more complex...
Another question. Does the failure to perform an EC analysis doom this application?
I don't think so, but obviously that's the subject of much of the dispute about whether it's called for or not. I think that Deanna's done a good job of analyzing it.
Okay. And what about the date of the well test that the applicant's submitting, that it's more than 10 years old? Can you submit, is there any limit on what you can submit, or does the board just evaluate the testimony, give it the weight that the board deems it to be given?
Yeah, there's no hard, black-and-white time limit on how old the data can be. I think...
I won't say glass half-full.
Yeah, all water issues, yes. But I think you are right to indicate that it's really up to the board to evaluate the evidence that comes in and decide what is most credible. And so to the extent that it being 10 years old weighs against that, that's the case.
Just on that, as Deanna's pointing out, there is an amendment from EGR from 2017 that specifically addresses water quantity. And so that's also in the attachment, so that's in the record.
I have a few questions to get, just to kind of get started back into some of this. My base question, and this is probably another Mr. Clark question. So there was a Measure 49 ruling on this, where a certain number of lots were given, and there was a remainder parcel. Does that not encumber the remainder parcel? Is that, I mean, I'm having trouble with, there was a land use process where we looked back and said there was damage done by rules passed since purchase of property. You know, there was legacy ownership, that was what Measure 37 and Measure 49 were all about. And they got a court ruling that granted a development right for nine lots, leaving the rest and remainder. How can we use our current zoning law to re-subdivide something that was determined under that legal proceeding for Measure 49? I'm a little confused as to why we're even talking about subdividing this remainder parcel.
Yeah, I can't speak with a lot of authority on what the Measure 49 determination was. I haven't seen it, haven't read it, and so I don't know what the limitations are. And I think that the applicant's counsel can probably address that. But in short, and so I think it depends on what property was put in front of the commission, I think it was, to decide how many home sites you get as part of that Measure 49 application, and whether it dealt with this remainder property or put any limitations on it, I can't say. It may have just dealt with the nine, I think, sites that were created as part of that process.
I guess, I don't know if, as we hold the, my guess is we're going to hold the record open at the end of this hearing. We've got reams of paper that have been submitted today that the applicant hasn't had a chance to review and rebut, and then there's the opportunity across, you know, all the good stuff that has to happen. So I'm sure we're going to hold the record open. One of my biggest questions on the start of this application is, was there an encumbrance on that property under that Measure 49 process, where it's no longer eligible for further development? That's, you know, besides, I mean, we can redesignate zoning all we want. You know, we can change the underlying zoning on that property possibly to a certain degree, but whether it can be developed...
Right.
...may be encumbered by that action. And that's, that's a very interesting piece of law because it's, you know, Measure 49's not exactly wrapped into our state land use code. So I'd appreciate any information I can get that will help me make that determination, and it's not an audience participation thing.
Yeah, we'll take a look at the Measure 49 approval to see what property was put in front of it, so.
At this, at this point, where the board, while we're still have the public record open, is asking questions of staff, there'll be an opportunity for the applicant to offer rebuttal, and then we're probably going to close the public hearing. But the record will remain open for folks in the audience that are raising their hand. If there's something additional you want us to know, that open record period's time to let us know. So just, just so, as you're, as I'm seeing hands kind of pop up in the background, I'm just going to make you aware, this is the process right now. It's time for the board to be asking some questions. Then it'll be an opportunity for the applicant to rebut any testimony that's been heard, or to try and clarify our questions. And then there'll be an open record period where everybody can submit additional information and maybe answer some of the questions that you don't feel were answered correctly. So hang tight, you'll have your opportunity. So that was my first, you know, as I try and think down this process of how this gets approved, you know, secondary to that, I do have a question about the process of not going back through Planning Commission regardless of 150 days. You know, it seems like the application was changed enough that I'm kind of wondering whether we should have told the applicant at that point, this is a new application and needs to start the process over again, or you need to waive the 150 days and allow us to send it back through Planning Commission. That's another question I'd like to try and have some clarity on.
So not to correct Mr. Clark, but I will in this instance, there actually isn't 150-day timeline for the plan amendments. So that's not an issue. However, there isn't anything that's codified that requires it go to the planning, back to the Planning Commission. It's not unheard of that something will change in between the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners, and of course, we have public hearings, and so additional information can be addressed in a public process. You know, you perhaps could recommend or require that it go back to the Planning Commission if you want to hear from the Planning Commission before you make your decision. But it's perfectly legitimate for us to do it in this manner. And again, I think we're going to have some open record time period here that we can address some of those questions for the board.
All right, just a little bit better understanding of that, because it was brought up in testimony. Now, I have a few more technical questions. As I've looked at some of the informations come in, we have a letter from Oregon Department of Agriculture talking about soils types and the designations they utilize to define that. Is that the same designations that are described in GO3 and land use law as far as agricultural capacity as we do this review for soils to determine if a land is suitable and/or if her designation is ag?
I can't speak for sure, but I do know that the test to meet the goal for 3 is like three- or four-pronged evaluation. And I don't think that AUMs, or what is, what do they say?
Yeah.
Animal mouth unit is part of that criteria. So it might be adding criteria that's not there. I'd have to address your question more in detail in a staff response, though.
It seemed to me, I'd never seen that soil classification brought up relative to a determination on a rezone of a resource land and nonresource. So that's why it was a surprise to me. I do, would like to understand the averaging calculation done for the forest capacity. Taking land as zero seems to be an unusual step, and whether that was done accurately is a question on my mind. You know, I, I know that there's, you know, a lot of concern about, you know, water capacity in this area. One of the things I think that the non-geotech and hydrogeologists-related people have difficulty understanding about fractured basalt aquifers that exist out in the south and west hills of the Eugene area, is they're limited because of the low porosity and movement of water. So what happens when you, when you stress them with a well is not so much that you impact your neighbor, you're impacting yourself. They have a very steep cone of depression on them, and it's just, it's not always an additive thing, and it's not always something that changes over time necessarily. So it's a very complex science, and I will review that with my knowledge that I have in the background. Coming from, you know, having tried to develop wellfields for EWEB, it's not exactly like I'm, I won't read that stuff with a scientific knowledge behind it. But it is very complex and sometimes very misunderstood as to why you have dry wells and limited capacities. Obvious reason, same reason you have arsenic problems, though, is you're drilling into volcanic rock that has a high arsenic content. So it's just one of those things. I have a question, and this is, you know, I sort of understand how site review might kick us back into a rezone, although, you know, as I think about, as I've developed land over the, over the years in my, before I was at EWEB, once you've got that zoning designation, even with an SR on it, it's far easier to go back and maintain that zoning designation. So my, one of my questions is, is why are we staying with RR5? There's larger lot RR designations, aren't they available?
There's RR10. I think that the applicant would have to answer this question, why they chose not to go to RR10 in lieu of RR5. But there is not like RR20, RR30.
Or RR40, which is really what they're asking to have, is two 40-acre lots. You know, there's a, there's a, isn't there EFU40?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. Which sounds like maybe that might have been acceptable to the neighbors here. And I just, the other question I have is, you described their application as designating these two 40-acre lots, leaving the seven-acre remainder homestead, right? And then there's going to be several open space parcels and a vineyard parcel?
Correct.
So they're arguing it's not resource land, but they're going to reserve a vineyard parcel?
It's my understanding that the vineyard parcel was for marketing theme, but there again... again, I think the applicant's attorney might be best to address what the intent of the vineyard was. It is in their findings.
And how, how do we constrain those open space parcels and the vineyard parcel from future development?
They're proposing a draft covenant to limit the uses. The draft covenant is an attached, attachment in the packet.
So the covenant, would that be?
Attachment four.
Is that covenant going to be on the actual plat, or is that going to be a recorded document that will take civil action to enforce?
On the tentative subdivision plan, there is notes on it, as I recall, as to the covenant, the limiting covenant, which is attachment 14.
I'm kind of looking towards Andy here because I'm actually asking a question, you know, these covenants that restrict these parcels, if in the future somebody decides they're going to start clearing one of those and drop a barn on it, let's say, and pasture animals rather than leave it as open space, how does, how does a neighbor get that enforced?
To answer, I think you're going generally not with the county. Yeah, that creates the public rights potentially to sue for enforcement to the extent that there's a development proposal which would be inconsistent with the declaration, that would probably enter into sort of for evidentiary value into the county's evaluation of that development proposal. But in terms of actual enforcement of the recorded covenant, that's generally a private matter.
Yeah, and as I've, being a rural commissioner, dealing with the issues that have to be enforced through civil action, I know that it is not an easy way to gain enforcement. So I'm reluctant to leave something to covenants sometimes. So I, that, that has, bothers me in some ways, these remainder parcels and all, so look for more clarification on that, maybe from the applicant. I think I've run through some of my questions that I came up as I was reviewing the package and listening to testimony. I will note for Ms. Segal, we had a previous application that dealt with working papers and working documents relative to master plan development, and we determined at that time that they were not part of the record and not something that somebody could request a change or land use change, and that was when Delta Sand and Gravel made an attempt to expand their pit based on working papers that showed there was an aggregate resource that they wanted to expand to. So I would take great care in citing working papers in making a land use argument because it's a very slippery slope, as we would have to go back and start using working papers for many other applications. And this board unanimously determined that Delta was incorrect in citing working documents and trying to expand their pit. So just my, my word of warning on that. So any other questions for staff before we move to the applicant's rebuttal? Thank you. I'll turn it over to the applicant, and you can have as much time as you need because we certainly threw a lot on the wall.
Thank you, commissioners. I want to try to run through this in as organized of a way as I can. Again, Mike Gilardi for the applicant. First, I want to address the question of, you know, is there going to be an additional subdivision in the future? And I think, you know, the dialogue that just took place, you know, goes a long way to answer that question. I'd just say that the applicant is, you know, willing to accept a condition of approval that will prevent this property from being subdivided in perpetuity, and I'd like to work with the staff on, you know, how to go about that. From a technical perspective, certainly we'd be willing to, you know, have a deed restriction that would be recorded and that would, you know, prohibit further subdivisions in perpetuity. So I want to be real clear on that, and I want to work with the county to, you know, to make that happen in a, in a, you know, defensible and a clear way. So I hope that that takes this issue off the table. In terms of, you know, why did, why are we asking for an RR5 zoning? And the reason for that is two things. One, the residual parcel is about seven acres, so it's needed for that, and it's also needed for the open space lots, which are kind of between five and 10 acres, and those need to be integrated into the, you know, larger subdivision and the ownership there. So that's why the RR5 designation is needed. You know, we, we can't, for example, rezone the two 40-acre lots for, to EFU because they don't qualify as agricultural land under statewide planning goals and the regulations that implement those. So we don't have a lot of options for other zones to go with, and that's why we're proposing, you know, nonresource designation and a zone of RR5. But it doesn't change the substance of what's going to happen in terms of, you know, what the size of the lots are going to be or ability to be, you know, again subdivided in the future because of the, you know, conditions that we're willing to stipulate to. In terms of, there were, you know, several issues that were raised about the Measure 37, Measure 49 history. To speak to your question, Commissioner Bozovich, you know, Measure 37 and Measure 49 were about compensating landowners for, you know, loss of property value associated with modern zoning. And so at that time, the analysis was, hey, this property is zoned for forest land. Doesn't mean that it's actually forest land if you went through that analysis, but it's zoned for forest land. Therefore, under that zoning designation, you can't have a residential subdivision. And under the Measure 37, Measure 49 law and the way that worked, once that was resolved through Measure 49, under that state law, the result on this property was nine five-acre lots, nine five-acre residential lots. So that was the, that was what was granted under Measure 49. That doesn't affect the rest of the property, which is, you know, that residual parcel, which is about 133 acres. That's the number I was looking for. So, you know, that, the rest of that acreage is subject to modern zoning laws, and what we're proposing to do today is consistent with the modern land use scheme because under the, you know, the analysis for resource zones, Goal 3 and Goal 4, it does not qualify for that, and therefore, it's appropriate under the modern rules to be zoned nonresource. And so it's a, it's a separate scheme, it's a, it's a separate process than what happened for that 45 acres that went into the five-acre lots through Measure 49. So completely separate process. And I, there's, you know, Mr. Malone was talking about how we should still consider those nine acres in terms of how we calculate what the residential density is, say, for Goal 5, and I, and I don't think that's appropriate. I mean, I know there's a diversity of opinion about Measure 37 and Measure 49, and I totally respect that, but it's not appropriate to sort of relitigate, you know, the Measure 49 process that happened on this property. So the property that we're talking about for Goal 5 and otherwise is that 133 acres. You know, we're proposing three residential, you know, three dwellings on that 133 acres, so that's a density of, you know, one every 44 acres. It's not the much, much more dense calculation that Mr. Malone came up with by trying to sort of bring the Measure 49 lots back into it. Now, in terms of the water analysis, and staff made this point, but, you know, Mr. Malone did make the point that, well, the analysis is stale, was done in 2007, and that's not accurate. It was revisited in 2017, and, you know, the applicant's consultants did look at wells that had been drilled since that point and where those water levels were, and took that into consideration and concluded that the, you know, the water supply wasn't significantly different than it was in 2007, at least as it applies to this property. And, you know, as you explained, Commissioner Bozovich, this, you know, the hydrogeology is very complicated. We're talking about fractured bedrock, you know. One of the speakers made the, you know, made the analogy that, well, this is a glass, and how many straws are you going to put at it? And that, you know, that's not how it works. We're talking about pockets of water in different places, and someone's experience with the water level on their property doesn't necessarily, isn't indicative of what's going on on another property. There was some testimony about all the wells that had been drilled on the Hafner property, and I believe five of those 10 wells were test wells that were dug, or that were drilled in 2007 in order to really evaluate what the groundwater supply was and find the right aquifer that was going to be adequate to supply the development that was proposed on that property. So, so that's why that work was done. It was to provide a real scientific basis to make sure that the water supply was going to be adequate here, and, you know, shouldn't take the number of wells as, to mean that there's a whole bunch of new wells that have been drilled and, you know, new straws in the ground because that's, that's not the case. Now, in terms of, I want to talk about Goal 3 and Goal 4. Goal 3 is about preservation of agricultural land. You know, folks have made some comments to the effect of, well, this property should be farmed, or, well, this property should be logged. And I, you know, I grew up in rural Lake County driving tractors and grass seed farms, and I chuckle at that a little bit because it's, it's easy to say that somebody else should do that type of work on their property, but it's not necessarily feasible for the people who actually own the property and work it. And, you know, that's why we have these, you know, scientific tests to determine whether property qualifies as agricultural land under Goal 3 or forest land under Goal 4. The Goal 3 test is primarily about soil classification. There was a law passed by the state legislature in 2010 that provided a process, you know, the default data for that is the U.S. Department of Agriculture's Soil Studies, NRCS. Under the 2010 law, a landowner can hire a private consultant to do a study of the soils on the property for agricultural purposes. It has to be someone who has been vetted by the State Land Use Agency, DLCD, and they have to do it under certain standards, and then that study then goes to DLCD, and they evaluate whether it was done properly. So the applicant had one of those studies done here, and what it shows is that a majority of the soils on the property are not Class 1 through 4 soils that qualify as agricultural land under the, under DLCD's rules. So that's not to say that there isn't, you know, some agricultural soil on the property, and certainly, you know, as folks pointed out, there is about six acres of vineyard on the property. And the proprietor of Noble Estate had planted and maintained that vineyard, and there's, you know, his testimony in the record is that all the land that is good commercial vineyard land has now been planted, and it's, the rest of it is not suitable for that purpose. Now, it's maybe, potentially suitable for, you know, very small-scale hobby viticulture, which has certainly been encouraged, you know, and it's part of the theme of the subdivision. So that doesn't mean that people can't use it for that purpose, but in terms of suitability for commercial viticulture, the evidence in the record is that what's suitable is, has been planted, and the rest of the property is not suitable for that purpose. Now, Goal 4 has a whole separate scheme for how you determine whether something is forest land or not, and the definition there is, the language is something like suitable for commercial timber production. That's a term that's not defined in state law, but, you know, Lake County has adopted a policy that it's basically 50 cubic acre foot per acre of timber, so that's the basic standard. Under DLCD's rules and guidance from Oregon Department of Forestry, you know, there's a sequence that you go through to be able to do that analysis. Again, the default is the NRCS data. If you can show that that data is not applicable or not accurate, then you kind of go through several other data sets, and you're allowed to do fieldwork on the property to determine whether it's actually suitable for commercial timber production. So the applicant did follow that sequence. That evidence is in the record, and, you know, the outcome of that is that the timber potential is less than the 50 cubic acre feet per acre standard that Lake County follows. And a question was raised as to, well, why are there some portions of the property that are measured at zero cubic feet per acre and not, you know, 10 or 20 or some other value? And the reason for that is because those areas of the property are on roads or they are wetlands. They are areas where trees do not grow. So there is a reason for that. That was not an arbitrary designation in order to manipulate the math on that. Now, two more issues. Question raised about whether, you know, we need to sort of have a new application or go back to the Planning Commission on this. Under state land use law, for, you know, procedural requirements, the, the basic obligation is that the public is informed as to what the proposal is, that they have noticed, and that they are able to, to provide input in that. And that's certainly happened in this case. You know, here we are, we've had a lot of testimony today, there's a lot of written evidence, there's going to be opportunity for additional evidence, which we'll talk about in a minute. And so that, you know, that basic requirement to allow the public to know what's going on and to participate, that's, that's been followed here. And then on a more technical level, you know, the application is for a zone change from forest land to nonresource and rural residential zoning. That hasn't changed. You know, the tentative plan for the subdivision has been reduced, but the, you know, the applicable legal criteria have not changed, and, you know, the impacts analysis is still there, it's still valid. Instead, what we're talking about is a much lower or a lower level of impact than what we analyzed for in the past. So I think the, you know, the analysis that's in the record is appropriate, and everyone's had an opportunity to participate in this process. So we believe it's appropriate for the board to be, to consider this application now as is. Now, finally, in terms of the next steps, you know, we've heard a lot of testimony today. There's a lot of new written evidence in the record as of today. You know, we would like the opportunity to review that and respond to that. So at the very least, we'd ask for an open record period so that, you know, all parties can introduce new evidence, and then we can have a, you know, response to that. My question for you all commissioners is, do you feel it would be helpful to instead continue this hearing and have more live testimony, say, on maybe the water issue? Would it be helpful to have experts here to have that dialogue, or would you prefer for us to do this on paper going forward?
Well, we haven't had a motion to close the public hearing or anything, so I'll look to the commissioners about whether they want to do a continuance or just an open record. I'm, I'm more leaning towards just an open record than a continuance of the public hearing because I think we, you know, had a well-advertised public hearing today, obviously, that the neighbors are here and have their voice, and we have a lot of, in fact, I got an email with, I think, six or seven letters attached to it this morning from neighbors. So there's plenty of new, new evidence already just being introduced today. Anyone else feel strongly about continuance versus open record?
I would just like to hear the rest of his remarks before we go into a discussion of that.
I think he was kind of wrapping his up.
That's right. I'm happy to answer any further questions that you have, but that's, that's what I have for today. Certainly like the opportunity to, you know, to be able to review and respond to the evidence that's, that's been presented here.
So do you have any questions for the applicant?
Have you concluded your remarks?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, Commissioner.
Well, I think that we should talk about the sequence of events, for how long to keep the record open. I think that's a good idea, and I think we should hear maybe a recommendation from Mr. Clark.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, it's, there, as Ms. Kay has reminded me, there isn't a timeline issue for this since the Complan Amendment zone change, so there is, typically we do seven, seven, and seven, you know, in terms of record open time, but you can extend that to be two weeks for everybody to submit what they want, two weeks for anybody to respond to the new stuff, plus two weeks for the applicant to finally sum up, which puts you out a month and a half. But, but almost none of that work is mine, and so I'm really speaking for staff and for applicant's counsel and for the folks in the audience, so whatever is deemed reasonable by the board after taking that into account, I think.
So as I look at staff and the applicant, are you looking for the usual seven, 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 or would you like to see it? seven, or you, would you like to see it be the 14, 14, 14 to give additional time?
Two weeks, two weeks, two weeks would be good.
This does differ, I think, than a lot of the appeals and matters you've heard, because there's a lot more substantive scientific analysis that I think that has happened, and some legal analysis, I think, needs to happen in this case.
Believe me, it's a lot of reading. So, let me whip up the calendar here and try and think about that. So 14 days, so the record would remain open until the 19th for any new testimony, and then the record would remain open until the 3rd for comments on the new, it's response to the new test, any response to the new testimony and additional legal arguments around that new testimony. So it's not, for folks in the audience that may not be familiar with this process, that's not any new testimony at that point. So the deadline for anything new and additional testimony towards the criteria will be the 4th, will be the 19th. The 3rd is the deadline for, you know, basically rebutting anything new the applicant has or adding legal argument, just legal argument at that point. And then we do another two weeks to the 17th.
We're down on the 17th.
But that doesn't matter, this is, yeah, as far as the record goes. At the 17th for applicant's summation rebuttal to all that information. And then we could, at that point, how long do you guys need to prepare the, for us to hold the next reading?
We would need...
From, from the 17th?
We would probably need, yeah, four weeks, just to get our packets. Be informed.
So looking, we're down the 14th, so would the 7th be enough time?
Go from the 17th, I'm saying, so we could do it in...
Oh, sorry. So August 7th?
So presuming the board is meeting on the 14th.
Or not. So it's either the 7th or the 21st, which would...
The 21st, I think.
Okay, so the 21st on, on the next reading and deliberations.
21st.
Get all those dates written down, Sid?
19th is keeping the record open.
Yep.
Open, the 3rd is...
Response to new testimony.
Yep.
And this...
And the 17th.
17th is applicant's rebuttal and summation. And then...
Hang out the 21st.
Yep. Third, third reading and deliberations on August 21st.
Would you know at the 4 o'clock time?
Yeah, and it'd be, all the, all the periods end at 4:00 p.m.
Yeah.
On that, on those dates. Just so you guys know, that we make our cutoff for testimony on those dates at 4:00 p.m.
With a 1:30 time certain.
Yeah, and, no, we don't need a time certain for the 5th, for that reading, because it's not a public hearing. So if I could get a motion to close the public hearing and set those, and hold the record open for those dates, and set the, the 3rd reading. Commissioner Lichen?
We'll give it a shot here. Mr. Chair, I'd like to move the second reading and public hearing...
Close the public hearing.
Move the second reading and close the public hearing in ordinance 1360. And, no, no, not yet. My...
Holding the record open.
Holding the record open through June 19th at 4:00 p.m. And with a response to new testimony on July 3rd. And we are, we are in, we are here on July 3rd, aren't we? Okay. July 3rd at 4:00 p.m. And all, and then finally, with the applicant ability to rebut and summation on July 17th by 4:00 p.m. And setting the 3rd reading and potential deliberation for August 21st. And we don't need a time certain?
No.
So just August 21st. There we go.
Second. There's no board meeting on the 3rd, but staff will present the bill.
Yeah.
We don't need to be meeting for the...
Yeah.
...close of a record period. So that's been moved and seconded, moved by Commissioner Lichen, seconded by Commissioner Williams, to close the public hearing and hold the record open to the dates that were read, and have the 3rd reading and potential deliberations on August 21st. Discussion to the motion. Seeing and hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. See everybody on August 19th.
21st.
21st, sorry. July 19th, that's the record period. Gets confusing when you start doing this.
No, 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 no. In fact, you should smack the floor while I'm saying.
So that gets us down to review of assignments. Mr. Rickoff, while we're, while the room's getting clear here.
Chair Bozovich, commissioners, bear with me, since I was not with you this morning. It's my understanding that one assignment we have, Dan Hurley, the new Public Works Director, will return with a draft ordinance that is palatable to both Oak Ridge and the Sheriff's Office. He's estimating that he needs six weeks to do that research and return. I was unsure whether the Comcast discussion, the Comcast settlement discussion turned into...
Actually, I think it was sort of an assignment to at least come back with an estimate of what the, the amount of the settlement will be coming to Lane County.
Yes. So it's my understanding that the supervisory order will be out on June 18th, and we'll probably need a week to 10 days to digest that order. So I would, I think at the end of June, we'd return with that, and I'll work with Diana to make sure that, that gets scheduled.
Our elected assessor will be involved in getting that information, so we can't exactly order him to do something. Hopefully, he'll be cooperative and get, help us get that. We can ask nicely.
We can ask nicely. And then, of course, I will affirm that the 3rd reading of ordinance 1360 will be scheduled on August 21st without a time certain, which will be much appreciated by staff. I'm not sure if there's anything else for the good of the order.
Any other assignments that we missed?
Sorry.
Sounds good. So is there any other business for the board today? Seeing and hearing none, we are adjourned.